There's Mike Teddy here.
Tom, we're ready to go.
Okay, okay, I'd like to the North Branford Budget Workshop bring the meeting to order on April 22, 2020 at 7:08 PM. Do a salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
United States of America.
To the republic.
Which is a thing.
A nation.
Regarding individual, private, just for all.
And justice for all.
All right. Role call, Michelle?
Mayor Viglione. Deputy Mayor Zampano.
Here.
Angeloni.
Here.
Counselor Diamond.
Here.
Counselor Duty.
Here.
Counselor Foreman.
Here.
Counselor Goode.
Here.
Counselor Paternoster.
Here.
Counselor Polizia.
Here.
Okay, item two, fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget deliberations to A, general government services.
Okay, this is Rose, so I'll start. So I just had a question on the account 4260, animal control. And I saw that there was a huge, a much larger increase in this than what we've had in the past. And also I know that there was some talk about the income that's generated that we don't share in that. So can we just have an update on that account?
Anthony, you there?
Yes, I am. The, if you recall, historically, the form was a percentage of the expenses that their Cosgrove Animal Shelter had incurred. And we had thought for a couple of years and worked with the folks at Branford that the philosophy should be, we should be sharing in the revenue that they derive and that our percentage should be based on the net cost that they incur to operate that facility. So Attorney Marino, in working with the Branford Town Attorney, has drawn up an agreement, still being kicked around by all the parties. But in short, the formula has been changed so that we will now be going forward, be paying our percentage of the net. So that was successful. However, in doing that, if we put that into place now, Branford would see a decline in their revenue. So they were willing to agree to our change in the formula with the caveat that they didn't go backwards on their intake that they take for revenue. So if you, if you look in the budget to budget, it shows an increase. If you look at the projected for the current year, it's the identical number, 130,813, which is the amount that we paid last year. So the agreement that was made, that's pending everybody's approval, is that that number will remain consistent at 13813 until such time as the revised formula dictates a higher number. So it was kind of a win on both sides. We, one, got the formula derived the way we wanted to have it calculated. And if we put that into place now, it would result in a lower income for them than they got previously. So the arrangement was, we would keep that number constant until such time as the formula dictated more than 130,800 and change.
Is there an estimate of, as to how long that might take?
I believe it was two or three years.
So this should be a steady cost for two to three years then?
That's correct.
The 130, okay.
Correct.
All right. I, I don't have any other questions in regards to that account. So the, the next one I had questions on was the account 4302, refuse removal. John's contract, you know, the, the household collection fee, the contract amount is substantially less than what's listed in our budget book. So is there something else that goes into that account?
Well, what happened in there? At the time the budget was being created, the, the item was going out to bid. So there was a number put in there that gave a little bit of a cushion in case the number came in higher than we were currently paying. So you would think that there'd be some savings on that line, and indeed there is. However, the line below that, the municipal solid waste, that 195, 300 number is actually 50% of what it's supposed to be. There was a formula put in there last year. As we were negotiating with Johns, there was thought they were going to pick up half of the sol, of the bulky waste, solid waste fees, I'm sorry. And that formula was left in there erroneously this year. So while it appears that there's savings on the top line of that, of that, those five accounts, and indeed there is, the amount that the second line is actually short, puts that department roughly in about a $40,000 hole. I, I would suggest you leave it for now and we can keep an eye on it. But you, you are correct that that top line, the collection fee, should be down to around the 550 odd number that Johns had bid. But the second line, there was a formula error there. And so in total, that department, I would leave as is.
Okay, so what's the, the line that says non-crossable bulky waste white goods? This was a line item in last year's budget that showed zero, and now this year it has 11,125. If it's the same contract, why are we paying?
Michelle, you on the call?
Yeah, I think she is.
Yes, ma'am. The, part of the issue has been that when people dump stuff out on the roads, there's extra costs for there. And now we are bringing all of the bulk to Sierra Road, which is a separate line item. So that's at $89 a ton for the bulk, which is twice a year. And then we also have, unfortunately, the stuff that's dumped out on the streets, Franny gets hit with that bill, or at least the bill goes to him, and then it comes back to this department for extra stuff that we're picking up on the side of the road throughout the year, too.
Okay. So last year, last year, we didn't get billed for any of those things?
I don't believe so. I'd have to go back. I'm unfortunately at home. Johns was part of the year. It was Johns. And I don't believe we were getting charged from them for the bulk.
Hi, Walt, Walter Goode. So we're basically paying by the pound, whatever's put out there then?
Well, ton, yes, correct.
You mean on, but, yeah. We, we don't pay for the, the bulk pickup that Johns does twice a year. That, I thought that was part of our contract.
No, when we went over to service only, we're paying Johns 532,500 for service contract only. When we went to Mirror, we had to pay Mirror for the MSW and the bulk. The bulk is not part of Johns' contract. Theirs is labor only.
Well, I, well, I remember when the contract changed, that we, when we went, we went from every week pickup to the twice a year, that that was part of, that was part of their contract. That was what they wanted was, you know, they said they wouldn't do the every week. So we costed out, you know, if it was monthly, quarterly, or back to twice a year. So I thought that was part of their contract.
No, there's a service only. When they were doing the bulk in the MSW, it was a lump sum contract, which was like the 900 some odd thousand dollars. Then they went to the bulk twice a year, and the contract became service only at the 532.5. And then next year it's the 550,000. So we pay all the tipping fees ourselves.
Okay.
And then keep in mind, we were one year starting July 1st of Mirror's contract with the recycling is still free, starting July 1st of 2021. We have no idea what our contract is to be with Mirror for MSW and recycling. So that'll be something to keep in mind for a year out.
We have to go out to bid anyway on the trash contract because we're in the final year as of July 1st.
They, there was for two years, correct.
Right.
But I knew renewables in there, yeah. And you saw the results when we went out to bid, how expensive it's going to be just on service only. Johns was at 600 and some odd thousand, and the other guy was over a million dollars just for service alone.
Right. Okay. So I, I know the issue came up recently in regards to our fuel contracts. So just wondering what the status of that is since fuel is so cheap right now? Can we not execute them? Can we get out of them? Can we, you know, what are our, our alternatives?
A couple of things there, Rose. I had Vin looking at it, and Marino, I'm not sure he's on the call. But also, there doesn't appear to be any out within those lang, that language for those contracts. And also I had Michelle check with the CROG, in which the consortium in which they bid. And there doesn't look like there's any opportunity to rework those, those contracts at this point. And I think the other issue is, is storage issues with respect to the glut of, of petroleum on, on the market, that there are issues, even if we had the ability to buy around, there'd be no place to, to store it. So I think there, there, there's slim, slim opportunities, in fact, probably no opportunities at this point, but we'll, we'll continue to review. And, and something may change at the, the Capital Region Council of Governments. Michelle reached out to them today, and I don't know if there's anything that they can do for us.
Have we reached the quota on, so do these contracts all start July 1st?
Uh, no, they're, I, go ahead, Michelle. I think they're staggered.
Sorry. The number two fuel oil and the diesel starts July 1. The gasoline was put out to bid by CROG prior, so that's already been in effect, I believe, since January 1. That'll expire 12/31. When I reached out to my purchasing people, they're all in the same situation because of diesel fuels for Board of Eds and so forth. I know Trumbull is looking at what they're going to do with 96,000 gallons of fuel, and they are having absolutely no luck so far with a different vendor than ours. There, the vendors are that you signed a contract at the agreed price, and their part is basically if the price was to go up, they could not charge us going up because we locked in at a fuel rate. There has not been one town successful in getting out of their contracts so far.
So where do we stand on, like, the quote, or what we committed? Like, how many gallons of each of those contracts have we, are we close on? Like, for this year, the one that will be expiring June 30th? If it's diesel and number two, or, what did you say, heating and diesel?
Yeah, the number two heating fuel and the diesel, Rose. The last I spoke with East River, they wanted to send us a bill for the fuel that we still had left. And that was a huge uproar with everybody doing business with East River. So they prematurely said they weren't going to deliver between now and June 30th. And I told them, yes, they would. And at that point, we would look to see what kind of gallons are left over that we would have to buy at the rate of the contract that we're currently under, which expires June 30th.
So do you know how, like, how much did we contract for and how much is left? That we have to go?
Um, you don't know who we contracted for because I'm, unfortunately, I'm not in the office. But I believe it was around 3,000 gallons left of fuel. So it wasn't a high quantity. And it's also at a higher rate. The rate we're paying now is over $2 a gallon. The rate we secured for this coming year is, I think, $1.87 or $1.89 a gallon.
Right.
So going forward, we're at a lower price per gallon.
Okay. All right. So then there's also the issue that we just, we got an email that Mike sent to us yesterday from Totucket TV, and I think it's a very valid request. They have really stepped up to the plate during this whole crisis and all of our meetings and televising. They did present to us a couple of months ago in regards to supporting them. And I think that is a very fair request. And I would like to make a motion to, at, for, starting July 1st, to allocate $12,000 a year to Totucket TV, which is on, for the, on the town council side, which covers the $600 a month that they pay towards part of the salaries that they pay for these people, and also filming various meetings. Planning and zoning is twice a month. It's basically $100 a meeting, and planning and zoning is twice a month. And they do inland, wetlands, and they also do the town council meetings. So I think $1,000 is a fair amount. My only question would be, Mike, is to what account?
I think it, I, I defer to Anthony, but I think, you know, for council meetings, uh,
I was gonna say 41, 4110, 320, mayor and council, other contractual.
Right, okay.
What was that, 4130?
4110, uh, 4110, mayor, council, department, 320 account, other contractual.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to increase account 4110.320, other contractual, for $12,000.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
I think they, I agree with Rose. I think they really provide us a wonderful service, and I think we need to help them out at this time.
Now, I, I know they also, you know, had asked for the Board of Education, so that would come out of their budget. It's a nominal fee, so I'm hoping that they can raise it to their budget.
Yeah, Walter Goode here. I think it's a good thing.
At the end of the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Okay. The next account is town attorney, account 4150. So there was an increase in litigation from this year to next year, from 50,000 to 65,000. And part of the explanation in our budget book was for ASME contracts. So I, I did talk to Vin Marino and asked him about this. And he felt that with, the biggest part of their litigation budget generally is land use litigation. And he did not see anything right now on the burner, on the forefront, going through. So he was comfortable with us only increasing that $5,000. So I would like to make a motion to decrease account 4150.316 by $10,000.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Okay, the next account is elections, account 4141. So I know this year is a presidential election. It's still to be determined, depending on what's going on with COVID-19, as to how that would be handled. But going on the information that's in our budget book, there's seven positions in there that are paid, last year they were paid an hourly rate of $12 an hour, which is basically a dollar over minimum wage. September of this year, minimum wage goes up to $12. So they would be right at minimum wage. And minimum wage is going to increase every year for the next three years until it gets up to $15 an hour. So I would like to make a proposal. So those seven positions, and they have various number of hours that they work throughout the year on primaries and the elections, totaled 1,938 hours. So I would like to make a motion to increase account 4141.102, which is the part-time help, by $1,938, which would raise their rate of pay from $12 to $13.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Thanks.
Okay, so the corresponding pension social security account for that. So I'd like to make a motion to increase account 4141.120, pension and social security, by $28.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained? Anyone against?
Okay, going to police, account 4210. So I know the pitch was made in their budget workshop to us about a new position for records. And they, you know, this budget was put together prior to the COVID-19 experience that we are all living through right now. I have, I have talked to the chief in regards to this position, and it's, it's a position that, given the times and not knowing where we're going and how this is going to affect all of us right now, this is a position that I'd like to make a motion to delete, to decrease from the budget. So I'd like to make a motion to decrease account 4210.101 by $77,632.
Second, it's Ron. Any discussion?
I would just like to say that I understand the problem in terms of the virus and all, and it's unfortunate because that would have enabled, that would have allowed the police department to put another police officer on the road, but I do understand the situation at this time.
Hello?
Anything else?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Right, I sent you an email.
Abstained?
It is. I revised it because some people were having trouble understanding it. Okay. You got that, Michelle? You're all done with that one?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So the corresponding?
Excuse me, Rose, if, if I could, there's, there's some folks that, that are having conversations on cell phones. If you could mute, mute yourself for that so we could hear Rose and, and Michelle can hear you. Sorry, if we could just mute, that'd be great. Thank you.
So the corresponding pension and social security for that account, I'd like to make a motion to decrease account 4210.120 for $13,703.
I'll second that.
Any questions? Or ask me any questions?
Any discussion?
So, Rose, this is Kevin. What, what would be the, the total amount for pension and social security if that is?
Well, I'm about to sign that.
If that's reduced.
$13,703.
Okay, just give me, give me a second. I can't hear you, number one. Number two, I'm trying to find where it is in the, the budget. Just, I just want to make sure that we're on the same, the same. So the, the total for the 120 account would be what?
The number that Anthony gave me was? I saw that document says now. Yep. Tracy, is that you? Can you please mute? Is 13,703?
I can't hear anybody. Something's got a, somebody's got a phone on.
Yeah, I think they muted Walt. It should be better now.
Should be all set. I, I'm talking about the total. Could you hear me, Rose?
Yes.
I, I'm talking about the total line item, not the?
Oh, I, I don't know what the total line item. Anthony just gave me the number related to that position.
Anthony, if you're there, would it be?
It's the 120 account.
Yeah, I, I'm trying to get the, just to make sure that the line item is right. Would it be the 1,214,766 if we reduce that?
That is exactly right.
All right, thank you. Your calculation's worth, Anthony.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Rose. Sorry.
No problem.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstained?
Okay, staying in the police department budget, account 319, professional development. So just wondering, I, I, and I know this has been in the budget every year, but, but I saw that education incentive was increased over last year. So what's the difference between the education incentive and the tuition reimbursement?
Yeah, so, Rose, that, that has to do with the, it's, it's contractual. It has to do with the degrees that the officers hold. So the more degrees that they have, the, the higher the benefit that they receive. Actually, this was calculated incorrectly last year. We actually paid out $6,000, I believe, last year, and only budgeted for $5,000. So that was just, just an adjustment to that.
Okay. So, and, and I know part of when you came on? So, and, and I know part of when you came on as chief, Kevin, one of the areas that you had looked at was increasing our professional development for training.
Yeah.
Police officers. So there was a significant increase from last year to the current year we're in to, to have more training. And I see that that is, you know, it's at the same level for next year.
Yep.
But...
Sorry.
But what we're looking to do is to cut ten thousand dollars from the police department budget. And this was one of the accounts that I was looking at. But if you feel that there's a, someplace else that you could come up with ten thousand dollars, I'm willing to listen to that and, and hold off on this one right now.
Yeah, so, so Rose, part, part of that is, is the fact that the officers, we have different number of officers that have to recertify every year, okay? It just depends upon the, their anniversary date of the graduation of the, of the police academy. So actually, we have a couple more of this here that have to recertify. So in, in the other aspect of this is, I, I want to, I want to focus in, in part of, part of my interview when I became chief. And, and, you know, the, the police department is one of the highest liability departments that you have in the town. You know, and a better trained police officer makes better decisions. So if you reduce their training and, I don't know how to... Their, their, their training was minimal before I came here. And, you know, put my risk management hat on, I want to make sure that the officers get the training that they need to make better decisions. So I guess with that, to make long story short, if you give me the opportunity to look through our budgets and see where we could reduce other line items, this is not a line item that I really would want to reduce. Just to, what, you know, we, we could get sued for anything. But to mitigate risk, I would rather have a better trained officer making better decisions than an uneducated officer.
That's fair. So would, would you be able to have some suggestions for tomorrow night's meeting?
If, if you give me till tomorrow night, yeah, I could sit down and try to see where we could, where, where we could make some cuts, you know, the, the budget. The, the budget's going to take me probably, you know, as you know, I came in last year, this budget was already made for me. It's going to take a year or two for me to refine it and try to really figure out where things are. So training is just somewhere where I, I, I'd rather not cut. If I could find other places, I'd rather cut there. And yes, short answer is, is if you give me till tomorrow night, I could, if, if I could break it up between line items, that would be great.
Okay, that's, that's fair. I have no problem with that. Okay. Moving on to fire department. So Anthony, I noticed that there was a huge increase in the pension, account one twenty, line item one twenty. Is this due to the numbers that Millen gave us at the pension committee, like to bring us up to funding levels?
Correct. This is straight from the actuarial evaluation that the pension committee received this past fall. It is significant increase. It's basically, remember that the valuation is nothing more than a snapshot in time, given the roster at that time, given the investment performance. And remember, in the last couple of years, we've had some lower than normal investment results, which they use a smoothing method. So rather than get that effect all in one year, they smoothed it out over, I believe, a five-year period. So we'll see, we'll see some of the impact of that lower investment earnings for the next couple of years still. But yes, this is the number that came right from the actuarial evaluation. And it has no increase in the multiplier factor. And this is based on the current numbers that's in place now.
Okay, and so if, for argument's sake, if the multiplier increased at the same rate that it has been increasing, I believe that increase per year is approximately seven thousand dollars?
That is the correct statement, yes.
Okay, so since we're still talking to the, the fire department in regards to this, we'll just, you know, it's not saying that there's no increase in pension, but whatever is decided will be able to come out of contingency.
Excellent.
Funding on that. As long as it's, you know, it's in that seven thousand, seven to ten thousand range or whatever it works. But that's kind of what we based our decision on, is that it would still be in that same range.
Certainly, okay.
Okay. All right. Account four oh five, technical equipment. We've made some very concerted efforts last year and this year to fund through both the budget and through CIP to get us up to snuff on the turnout gear and the cylinders and that type of thing. So I saw that there was a fifteen thousand dollar increase over the current year's budget. So I would like to make a motion to decrease line item forty-two twenty dot four oh five, technical equipment by seven thousand five hundred.
Mike, if I might say something?
Yeah, to the chair, Tom, yeah, I, I don't...
Well, the, the motion isn't on the floor yet.
Yeah, hold on, we're waiting for discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right. I think you need a second.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, discussion?
Rose, this is Walt Goode.
Yep.
That's going from fifty to sixty-five, is that what they requested here?
Uh, yeah, let me just...
Yeah.
Fifty to sixty-five thousand?
Correct. But we are, we are funding in, in capital improvements. We are funding turnout gear for sixty thousand, SCBA cylinders for fifty thousand, and vehicle repeaters for twenty-nine thousand four sixty.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Angeloni, what was that last? It was, uh, cylinders and...
Vehicle repeaters.
And the amount of?
Twenty-nine four sixty.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Like, I, I think Ed Purnier wanted to say something. Did you want, can he say something now before we vote?
You have to unmute. There you go.
Yeah, no, I, I just wanted you to, to realize that, I mean, I know you said that you were funding the, but, I mean, in the tires. I mean, that's a yearly thing with the hose and everything. I mean, we, we were trying to catch up. You know.
Right. I mean, we, there is an increase in the account. We're still giving you an increase in the account. And I thought we had caught up on hose last year when we went through all of the hose inspection and did all of that. I thought, I thought we were...
What, I...
I didn't think we were still behind on the hoses.
Well, we're not behind, but what we're trying to do is, is separate the, the dates where it expires so we don't get stuck like we did like four or five years ago where we had to buy so much at one time. So I know that's why I had, you know. And, and then there's still, there's still a couple of open things on, on the, on the firehouse leases and stuff like that. And money that they wanted to add for, for repairs and stuff and...
And we, we didn't get that far in the budget yet.
Yeah, but, yeah, I mean, I know the technical equipment that we were saving, you know, we were trying to just catch up from, you know, so we don't get banged all at once for, you know, for thirty thousand for equipment and, and, you know, thirty-five thousand for hose. That was the only thing why we, we kept that, we, we... And then this year, we had to go for tires on all the pieces because they expired again.
Right, but I thought, I mean, that's, that was, that's part of what's in here and you're not, and we didn't keep it, we're not suggesting that we keep the same. We did give an increase. It's just...
Chief, if you want to chime in here.
Sure, ready. Just members of the town council, first, I, I appreciate everybody's willingness to, to bargain with us. And, and I think during the budget presentation, I provided you with some very valuable information and explained the differences of where our increases were and the purposes. So if I look at our entire budget, here we can actually buy stuff that allows us to maintain our operations status quo. There's really two accounts, two oh two, technical supplies and four oh five, technical equipment that we use to buy things that make the fire department operate. Some are disposable, some are not disposable. So if you look at technical equipment, and if you were to keep it at the sixty-five thousand that we requested, in actuality of the total fire department's budget, it only represents seven percent of the entire budget. Seven percent to make the fire department operate. So keeping us on track with self-contained bringing the apparatus, cylinders, that, that's a federal requirement of DOT. Buying turnout gear is an NFPA requirement that I can't ignore because NFPA's, in a court of law, it's an area norm. And with hose, yeah, we, we have caught up. So I've been chief since two thousand five, two thousand six. It's taken me this long to catch up on things that we were behind. That's a long time. So if everything gets funded as we asked, next year, we're going to be in really, really good shape. So I, I find it very commendable that next year, we're, from the CIP side of the house, we may not ask for anything because we're going to, we're going to be back on track with where we need to be. We're going to be back on track that is parallel to the fire departments that surround us, not at a deficiency. So I really need you to take that to heart when you make your decision.
I, I mean, I appreciate everything that the fire department does and, and everything else. But, I mean, we're looking at the budget and having to try to come up with in areas that we still gave you an increase. And we're trying to find money because we don't know how long this coronavirus is going to last and what is going to happen in the coming months or the, the next fiscal year. So we're just looking at everything in the budget and trying not to kill any one department and decimate them. And so this was an, this was an item that we thought was a fair area to go to. We didn't touch the account where the tires are in for the trucks. That stayed the same as your request. That didn't change. And in CIP right now, what we're looking at is, there's, you know, on all the turnout gear and all that other stuff, we're not looking to, to do anything there. So I, you know, in talking with the, you know, rest of my constituents in our caucus, we just thought this was a fair amount.
I, I, I guess if that's the feeling of the majority, then, you know...
We'll, we'll see when the vote comes. I mean, I...
We'll, we'll have to work around what we're given. But some, sometimes we make bad decisions and sometimes we make terrible decisions. So I, I guess I got to live with a bad decision.
Well, you know, we have an obligation here with the, the economic environment. It's not just the coronavirus. The coronavirus developed into an economic situation, which we don't know what tomorrow is. We don't know what next week is. We don't know what next month is. So we have to be very cautious for the town as a whole. And like Rose is pointing out, we're not, it didn't go to zero. I mean, you know, we didn't, we didn't maintain the, the previous year. We didn't reduce it. I mean, we're trying to, we're trying to do the best we can taking care of the town as a whole.
But I, I, I really, I, I respect that. But remember this, we have a volunteer fire department. You save yourself four to five million dollars a year by having a volunteer fire department. That does, that does a great job. So working with the town council, working with our board of fire commissioners, we got to support them any way we can. And that's my job.
I'd just like to add one more thing too. I mean, I, I realize everybody's saying about the coronavirus, we don't know where it's going to take us. And, and, I mean, who knows better than us, the first responders? And, and so who knows in September what we, we're going to need for equipment? We don't know. We don't want to get stuck like we got last, this time with, with one locker full of stuff. So I mean, you know, everybody's using the coronavirus room. You know, they don't know what's going to happen, neither do we. So I mean, you know, our technicals, equipments account, I mean, if we have to buy something, it's going to come out of that account. You know, I mean, I didn't want to go to the coronavirus rule, but you know, and, and everybody said, well, you know, we got to look out for the town. Nobody's looking out for the town more than we are as a fire department.
And we appreciate everything that you're doing, the ambulance corps, you know, all of our first responders. It's not a reflection on what you are giving to the town at all. It, it's still a fifteen percent increase in that line item.
Rose, it's not... We don't know what we need. Nobody knows what we need. I mean, if you listen to the news, they're, they're saying the school might not even open this year. So I mean, who knows what we need?
That's right. It's, it's a big unknown for all of us.
Rose, it's, it's Ron. So with that seven, with that seven thousand five hundred dollar cut plus the twenty-nine thousand in the CIP, you're still talking about over eighty-six thousand dollars, correct? Two?
Well, there's, there's, there's a variety of items in the CIP.
Well, I'm with the ones that you referred to with the, for the tanks and the turnout gear. You said it was about twenty-nine?
No, no, the twenty-nine is just the repeaters. The turnout gear and the cylinders is a hundred and ten thousand dollars in CIP.
You, you got to remember that, that keeps us in compliance with federal regulations. I, I don't have an option.
Right, no, I, I...
That's the regulation.
I know, I, I understand that.
No, I know, but just because it's a federal regulation, we just, we can't, we can't pretend like it, it doesn't exist either. I mean, it is, it is money coming out of the budget for you. Is there, if they do run into, to trouble, Rose, down, you know, with, with the, you know, to the commissioner's point, if they run into trouble down the road with supplies again, is there, is there any type of a contingency fund that we can, if that happens, we can support them from?
Yeah, well, I, I do believe in Anthony, you can chime in, or Mike, you can chime in about, because Connecticut was declared a disaster zone, we are eligible for FEMA money, which is a seventy-five percent reimbursement on things. And I believe if they need more supplies due to COVID-19 and things like that, I believe that all gets a part of the tally.
Those, those are, yeah, those accounts are already set up, Rose, and in place and working.
Yeah, so, so, you know, we would have to, the town would have to come up with the twenty-five percent share because we would get reimbursed for that. And so that, whatever that final number is that gets submitted to the federal, up to FEMA, we would have to come up with that twenty-five percent. Which, which Anthony Esposito talked to us about, you know, a couple council meetings ago about, you know, that, at the, that's where we would have to go. But they have no idea what that number is right now or where it'll end up.
Chief Stewart, Walter Goode here.
Chief Stewart, Walter Goode here. You there, chief?
Yep, good, Walt.
Is there any place that you think we could find a place to cut something here? Can you give us something, is there any place that you could come up with something?
Yeah, so in our, our initial budget meeting with the town manager and the finance director. We already went line by line and we already made cuts in the budget. Uh, prior to you receiving the, uh, the proposed budget out of the town manager's office wall. So we, we made, we made cuts. Um, way before COVID nineteen even started. So, Walt, are you there?
Yes, I'm listening.
Okay, um. So. I, i- if you want me to, if you want me to go back in and identify where you're going to take. Um. Another seventy-five hundred dollars, I mean, I, 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 I could echo what the chief said. And I can go back in tomorrow and look at line by line. And honestly, what you had brought up before, uh, in another discussion. Strikes a bell and that is, uh, what's the savings with regards to fuel costs? Both gasoline, diesel and heating oil. Um, because that would, that should reflect in our budget at some point as well.
Right.
Well, we were told that there is none, that we can't get out of the contracts. Correct, isn't that what?
Right, that, that's correct.
So there is, there, right now, what we're being told is that there, there are no savings.
So, uh. So is that the same as last year?
No, it's a lower amount, which is already reflected in the budget. It's a lower price, which is already in the budget book.
Okay. I, 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 you know, I, I would respect what your motion was and, and go with it.
There's just, there's just one more thing too, just to. In our budget, we still have the firehouse leases, they're still not signed yet, so that's up in the air.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't get to that yet, that's, that's on our list.
Yeah, but I mean, that's in our budget, so I mean, you know, when you're cutting. I, I, you know, that, that's two less places that we could cut because we don't know what it's going to cost us. Out of the budget.
There, there is a figure for a placeholder though in the budget, it's not a zero, so. So it's, it would just be the increase in the lease.
Any other discussion?
So. Chief Stewart, I just wanted to ask you, you. You said, um. Obviously, we're, we're looking to, to trim what we can. Do, do you want till tomorrow to take a look at it, or do you want us to, to vote on that seventy-five hundred now?
Yeah, Ronnie, uh, I, I would say go with your motion and we'll work around it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Okay, so. The next item is lease prices. And I know this is still under negotiation, that the leases have not been signed and the town attorney is. Mike, what is the status on the leases?
Yeah, we still, we were pretty close, um, but still needed one more meeting to get through that, um, it's. Possible I can do it remotely wi- with them and, and try to, try to wrap that up.
Okay, so. Um. So in the budget book, is the current lease that we're paying, Anthony?
No, that is the lease with a built-in three percent in for this year that they have not gotten yet.
For the nineteen?
For the nineteen twenty. Right, the number that's in there is, is the last year's number with a three percent. Increase for nineteen twenty, that has not been given to them yet because the lease hasn't been signed yet.
Okay, all right, so whatever happens with the lease agreements and once they're signed for the twenty-twenty-one. Whatever that increase is, will be able to come out of contingency. So that there is provisions. Um, to pay whatever that lease increase will be.
Okay.
Okay, and then there's one, uh, other item that's in the budget, which was a new item this year. It's line item, it's in, uh, account three twenty contractual repairs. And it was, uh, contractual repairs for the firehouses. What exactly is that for? Because I, that, it wasn't in last year's budget and according to the leases, I thought we were paying. The leases and all of the utilities. Um, and the fire, the individual firehouses were, do their own maintenance on the buildings. So what are the contractual repairs?
This is, uh, the town attorney, Ben Marino, uh, in the. Uh, leases, part of the negotiation was that the town would pay for the repair of the overhead doors. Uh. That, which is something that I think historically the town had not done because the overhead door operation was an essential. Uh, part of providing the fire service. To the extent that they're, to the extent that they're damaged, they tend to be damaged, uh, because of the use for fire purposes.
Okay, so that five thousand is a placeholder?
I believe the answer would be yes, but I defer to Mike.
Yes.
Okay, so. So when we get to the CIP budget. Um, we are going to make a recommendation that we establish a facility maintenance reserve account. And so this is to repair overhead doors, I think. If anything comes up during our fiscal year, that that would be able to be handled under the facility maintenance reserve. Um, but I will defer on this item until after we do CIP to see if that goes through. And if it does, then we'll come back to this one.
Just wanted to add something in front of me, um, I know every year I say this. The, I, I believe the firehouse leases and all should not even be in our budget. I mean, we have, the fire commission has no say over the firehouses. We don't sit in on the meetings for the negotiations for the firehouses, for the leases. I, I, you know, I, I don't know why their leases are in our budget. I believe they should be in the town manager's budget, but, I mean, that's something we say every year and every year we have the leases. But we as the fire commission and, and the chief is the chief, have no say over the firehouses. The firehouses are individually owned by the members. So, I mean, it's in our budget every year and we. But, uh, I, you know, that's just a pitch I, I, I pitch every year.
Okay, moving on to ambulance. Account forty-two twenty-five. I'd like to make a motion to decrease forty-two twenty-five point three oh eight contractual services by twenty-five thousand dollars. And this will fund it at the same level as we're funding this year in nineteen twenty.
I'll second it for discussion.
So Rose, just for clarity, you're going from the manager's proposal of one seventy-five back to one fifty, is that correct?
Correct.
How, how are we doing this year, does anybody know?
We're probably in the red like we have been every year that we've had the ambulance corps, the company.
So, uh, that, that is common amongst EMS nationwide. And I can tell you this, our calls are down about thirty percent because of COVID nineteen. So. Looking at our collection rate. And it's. Directly related to the age of the community. And it's directly related, as I demonstrated to you in the budget presentation, of how many people that we transport are on Medicaid, Medicare. Uh, are self-insured or have no insurance. Um, so I would anticipate that next year, our, uh. Our money into the account from collections is going to be less than this year. Even though our, our collection rate is ninety-two percent. Our calls are down thirty percent.
Chief, I appreciate that, um, it's Ron. How does that affect? How do those two numbers correlate, the collection rate and the money that bring, you bring in through collections versus what's in the budget there, can you just tell me how that works?
Yeah, so, um, I, I, I. So the money that we take in. From collections offsets the total budget combined with the transfer in the general fund to make up the difference.
And I'm, I'm also struggling, chief, if you're down thirty percent on calls. How does that correlate to your bottom line? Is that? Less?
Yes. Yeah, so if we're doing thirty percent less transports. We can expect a, a lesser amount being taken in by our collections.
Okay. That means, uh.
Are there any costs that, uh, drop as well because you're not transporting as much?
There is not, there's no difference.
Fuel?
Uh, well, uh, yeah, ultimately, fu- fuel, you're, you're right.
Part-time?
Uh, well.
Stipids for calls?
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't think of a few of them.
No, not stipids, absolutely not stipids.
No, I, I mean, uh, the, the calls that the part-timers get.
Yeah, so.
Per call.
Yeah, so because overall calls are down thirty percent. So your pay per call, you're right, Mike, your pay per call is ultimately going to be down at the end of the year. Uh, providing that nothing changes.
So the fire department's going to have a surplus.
So the ambulance, uh, could have a surplus in that account. Correct.
Thank God, it's not like the buses that don't run, that don't use fuel. That we're not going to save money on.
Any other discussion?
Well, in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions?
Okay, the next department is public works. Um, so there were. There were actually, there were two full-time changes in this account, one was for the superintendent with a start date of. January first of twenty, so it was a half-year position. Um. And then along with that, there was a proposal to have another lead man, so it was not a new position, it was a, just a change in salary. Um. And. I think we've discussed this. Several times as far as it's a position that is needed because at some point in time. Um, Franny is going to retire and we do need to have someone, um, that can train under him. But, um. Again, given the situation and the economic situation that we're in. Um, I know a number of us have talked to Franny and. Um, as much as he doesn't want to see it go, he totally understands the situation. Um. So I would like to make a proposal, I, I would like to make a motion to decrease account forty-three oh five, one oh one. By forty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars.
I'll second that, Walter Goode.
Discussion?
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain?
Okay, so the corresponding pension in social security account. Um. Anthony. Is it just the seven point six five and the nine percent for pension on that full-time?
That is correct.
Okay, so I believe the dollar amount comes out to seventy-three oh seven. Do you, you just want to verify that first?
Uh, it has also, I think, an IC, um. It's just, yeah, that, that should be good, seventy-three oh seven.
Well, so I took the nine percent and the seven six five, is there anything else?
Well, they get the ICMA, uh, I think is in there as well.
So how much is that?
Yeah.
Hang on, let me get it there. No, that, that number's right you have.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to decrease account forty-three oh five point one twenty by seven thousand, three hundred and seven dollars.
Second.
Was that one?
Yep.
What was that?
What was that number?
Seven thousand, three hundred and seven.
Don't forget the clothing, the clothing, uh, line.
This is, this is just pension and social security?
Yeah.
Any discussion?
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
So Anthony, are there any other related costs to that half-year position?
Uh, I know Fran put the uniform, you mentioned uniform, I'm not sure if you put it in the, this total.
I think I did.
There's nineteen, there's nineteen in the uniform.
Right, so you gotta take one out, three hundred, three hundred dollars, I think it is.
So you could reduce, uh, forty-three oh five, uh, two oh four by three hundred dollars. That's a motion.
Second.
I'm sorry, Council Dooty, could you just repeat that?
Yeah, it's the count, count number forty-three oh five dash two oh four. Uniforms and clothing by three hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you.
And, and then two oh four.
Two, two oh four is the one we just did, we're doing right now.
I'm sorry, I, I.
That's okay. So Mike made the motion and I seconded it.
Any discussion?
Well, in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions?
Okay, the next account is community center. Account.
Mechanic, Rose.
Um, well, I just, I put it on the sheet, but, um. It's there, it's, it's a new position for the budget, I, it's listed there, but, um, I'm not. Propose, I, I want to keep the position, so I'm not making a motion to cut it. Any?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So if everyone's in, we're just going to pass over that one. So if everyone's in, we're just gonna pass over that one. Next account is Community Center. Forty-four oh one. So I, I know that the town recently got a new phone system put in and in checking in all the other departments. All of their line charges and toll calls were now zero because the cost of this is under. Central government, it's, it's in the purchasing department. They took it for the whole town. So I'd like to make a motion to decrease line item forty-four oh one point three oh one by one thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars.
Second.
Discussion?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
In account, line item in Community Center three nineteen, professional development. So there's a line item in there for the National Recreation Conference. And considering at this time that all travel's on hold and that we do not currently have a full-time rec person. We did send someone very recently. But I'm going to make a motion to decrease this line amount by that conference. But on the flip side of that, also to add in. Two things that came out during the interview process for a new director. Which that position is just on hold right now. It's not that we're not filling it, but we have an interim in there. But the two things that came out was our new park and rec director should have park inspections certification. Because that is supposed to be done on a monthly basis. I know the insurance company does it. Once a year or maybe twice a year, but this should actually be done on a monthly basis. So they need certification for that. And we also need staff training in mental health issues. And considering we do the summer programs and things like that where we're dealing with kids and have other programs. This is also an area, so the estimated cost to do that is approximately a thousand dollars. So my motion will be to decrease line item forty-four oh one point three one nine by one thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
Discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Okay, going to library. The one, the one area that I saw where they had, you know, one of their larger increases is in their three twenty account and this was. As Lauren had explained to us. The programs that they do both for adults and children and then their summer program. And since the summer program is probably unknown at this time. For this year, and this is the budget that would cover that summer program. I am making a motion to decrease account forty-four sixteen three twenty. By two thousand dollars. So this is still an increase over their current budget. It's, it's a slight reduction.
Second.
Discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Okay, contingency, account forty-seven oh three. So in looking in the budget book. I saw that there was their estimated balance for June thirtieth in contingency was an ex, was two thousand, or two hundred thousand dollars and we had the budgeted. Around two twenty-seven, I think, or two twenty-five. So in talking to Anthony and looking at what types of things we've already taken out of contingency. If we establish the, the facility maintenance reserve, that would take care of a number of the things that we paid out of contingency. And. He was comfortable with it because they upped it to two forty. So he was comfortable with a hundred and seventy-five thousand in contingency, so that would be a decrease of sixty-five thousand based on. The budgeted amount. So I would like to make a motion to increase forty-seven oh three point seven sixty by sixty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone like to abstain?
That's all that I have on the general government side, services side right now. I don't know if anyone else has anything, but.
Okay. Next item B, capital improvement plan?
I would, I would like to make a statement before we start discussing the capital improvement plan.
Sure.
You know, we always say when we run for office that we're transparent. And I really feel that, that the town manager, the town manager has information about culinary bond. Analysis of the, of the high school and the police station and he prefers not to share it with the town council. I think that's wrong. I think if we're gonna be transparent, I think it's only fair that we know what that is and I think it's only fair to the Board of Ed that they know what that is. So they, they have a lot to do because if they want to meet the June thirtieth deadline, they need information. At this point, I really feel it's inappropriate that we do not, as a town council, have that information now, not that we have to wait.
But I respectfully disagree because it's not complete. It doesn't include the communication center. And I don't think it's fair that we pit one against the other. The, the high school against the police department. So I think it's fair that we wait, it's not gonna have an effect on this budget. Because anything that is done in regards to that won't happen in twenty twenty-one. And so we still have some time and it's not gonna affect the, the bottom line for this year.
Well, I, but the high, but the Board of Ed needs information. If they're going to be ready. If, if for some reason it is approved by June thirtieth, they need that information so they can, they can plan.
Well, well, that's fine. I'm not saying, I, I just don't think that we need to talk about it right now with the budget. Because it's not protecting and we need to get the budget done by tomorrow night.
I understand, I'm just making a statement that I think it's wrong that we, we're not being transparent.
I, I just don't think we have all the information and it's not fair to put out false information out there. Because we don't have, we haven't, we haven't discussed it as a council to even determine. What we're bonding, what we're gonna do with our existing bonds. And all of our different options. So I think we need to have more of a discussion on it.
Well, I just. I, 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 I respectfully disagree with you.
Well, to be fair, be right, communications is not part of police. Communications is a separate item. So if they're gonna bond for communications, it's a bonding for a separate item. It's not. You got three items up there for, for bonding if you're gonna do it. High school, police department and communications. They're three separate entities and not the same.
Correct. But we don't, but, but the information that Mike has right now doesn't include the communication piece of it.
That's correct.
We don't have all the bond information.
Well, there's no reason to hold back the other two if you don't have that one. So.
And I think.
Marie does have a point. I could see Rose's point, but Marie does have a point too.
But the, the communications, the communications has a lot to do with if we do decide to do a new police department because we don't want to put a new communication center. In an old police department and then have to move it again. So it is correl, it is correlated to the new building.
It's not. It's completely separate. Communications is completely separate from the new police station.
Financially it is, but what about the cost, the numbers?
You might be, you might be a year out, you might be a year out on communications, so you really don't know, you know?
So would you, would you rather bond everything individually or would you rather redo all of our bonds in one shot and try to save as much money as possible?
You're gonna have to bond individually for each item and then put them all in one bond. But they're three separate items. Don't, don't confuse it as they're, they're two in one.
No, I under, but I understand that, but you just said two, and I think this is where we're. Maybe a little miscommunication. We're, we're gonna do one total bond if we do it all, right? We're gonna do one total bond.
Right.
So you're gonna have the numbers in order to, to fill in that portion of the bond, correct?
Right.
Right, and those, those numbers are preliminary. I haven't even had a chance to go on through them with, with Anthony. We've been focused on the budget and trying to get the budget numbers together without putting out information that's, that's, that's incomplete and it's not even.
Well, then you should, then Mike, you should have, you should have expressed the email in a different fashion. That's not the way I read that.
Well, I, I think I did say that. I, I, that was, it was preliminary numbers and that, as Rose, Rose said the same thing. She read it, you know, it, it's the fact that it, it, in totality, the impact of what we're talking about here is just two pieces and it doesn't have the third piece in terms of the communication, so it's incomplete.
I'm merely saying that the Board of Ed needs information.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't disagree. I, I would just, I think it's a courtesy to the council to have something to, to review and to be complete before, before it was released to the general public.
Hey, we're, we're in, we're in our budget at the moment and we need, this is, needs to be our priority at the moment. And we didn't even get through the budget. Once we get through the budget, then we can get on to other, other business, but right now, this is our first priority.
And I'm not saying that it isn't.
So how, so we can't.
I'm just saying that I just. I read that email today. I, I felt that it was inappropriate that, you know, I have information, but I'm not sharing with the town council. That's really my point.
Okay, well, I mean, point, you know, okay, I mean, you made a point.
I, I just wanted to make it clear that we're, you know, each one is a separate item. There's three separate items. If you've got prices on two of them and you don't have prices on the third one, let me say we can't do it. You could do it on two of them and then wait for a third.
Well, but I mean.
Don't, don't try to, don't try to slop it into, well, we don't have communications, so we can't bid on, you know, anything. That's not the case. The case is we have, we have a budget to get through and that's, that's, that is really our priority and we're just getting, we're just. Well, that's, that's the way it wasn't, it wasn't presented that way a few minutes ago in the conversation. It was, well, we don't have the third, so we can't go ahead with anything.
Yeah, it's a big, it's a big piece and it, but the, even the two pieces, leaving that third piece aside. The two pieces haven't even had a chance to, to take a look at whether or not the consultant has completed and he said it was prelim, preliminary, so he hasn't even finished doing those numbers. And I don't think the council wants me to, to send and bombard you with, with, with that in the middle of the budget. I figured we'd wait to get through to this week and then see if he's got any, any, any revised numbers and then put that out. I have no problem putting it out. I just, I, again, for me, it was just a courtesy to the council before I. Start sending out information to, to another body before the council hasn't even had the chance to review it. And we're, like we said, just trying to get through this week for, for the budget deliberations, budget workshops.
That's, that's good because I have no problem waiting for that, but I just don't want it to be construed that, you know, well, we don't have the price for this, so we can't go ahead with anything, you know, that's not.
No, right, because you, you're right, Mike, because in the final analysis, you could break all three, you could, because you have to make a decision on, on which projects are gonna go forward and which are not.
Right. Well, right now, we're doing the budget meeting, right?
Right.
Right.
Any other? Buddy, have any other discussion?
So are, are we still on CIP?
Well, we, yeah, we're, we didn't get there yet. To B.
Okay, so, so last night during the budget presentation, I did ask the superintendent in regards to one of their. Capital expenditures and it was the J H S, the air conditioning, cooling tower and compressor, which he did, I sent him an email, he did respond to us. The, the problem that I have is that this, the number that's in their budget is not. A very, according to the superintendent, is not, is a soft number, is a number that's three years old. So I'm wondering, is there any possibility that we can get a more accurate number before we take any action on that?
The answer to the question is yes. As I stated in the email, they're twenty years old, the compressor and the cooling tower. They are currently being repaired. On a NAD basis by Mr. Florio, the tower leaks. It, it is operating right now. It's, it's really more for informational purposes. Three years ago, we went out and, and bid on just prices, similar to many capital project. That do not get done. They, they, they hang around and we don't update the cost, so I'm sure that cost is gonna be significantly higher three years later. You're gonna have to rent a crane to disassemble and get that tower out of there and then to put the new one in if you were to do that, so. It's more for informational, we can, I spoke to John Florio today about updating those numbers with a couple of different vendors now to be competitive with. The nature of the market right now, so he was gonna do that. But that, that isn't, we must do this today. It's an awareness thing that if that does go, that building is central air conditioning. And you can't put window units in or you can't do anything to, you know. Do the, the cooling of the building, so we, we would have to do that, that unit.
Yeah, so, so, you know, I totally get the fact that the building is twenty years old. This is the original one. So then, and you've had issues and, and you're maintaining and fixing them, but at some point in time, we're going to have to replace it. So. So in order for us to plan and if we wanted to do this in next year's capital budget, that the money's there for you to do it. I have a hard time allocating money that I know is not gonna, that there's not gonna be enough money there and then what do we do?
Rose, I'm not confident that there's gonna be a lot of capital projects done next year. That's one that, you know, we can keep an eye on. You know, we know that we have reserve accounts with the state statute. If we had to look at something like that, if we get into an emergency situation and we could access that. So I, I.
Okay, so you don't.
I'm not, I'm not holding my breath on a lot of capital projects.
Well, we, we, we do have some money that, in our budget that's built in and we were looking at it, but. So I guess what, what I'm hearing from you is that you don't want this done for next year.
You're not, you're not hearing that. You prioritize and do the capital. That's under your.
I know, but, but it's, it's hard, it's hard to prioritize if we don't have, if you're telling us that this is not an accurate number.
If you're asking me to get a, a price on that and update that number and if it's double that. Which it realistically could be, we can come back to you tomorrow night with a, with a new number.
Okay.
If, if that, if that's something that, you know, you're prioritizing when you look at our list.
Um, it, it was. It was, it was, it's on the list to, to do. But when you came back and said that it was a soft number and that it could be substantially higher.
Hey Rose, it's Shawna Holzer. I have a quick question for you. Moving forward, when we put, we didn't do for the capital budget. Would you like us to have a current bid so it's easier for you to commit to it or not? So every year we prioritize. Can you, can we re-bid? Is that what you'd like?
It's not necessarily, you, you don't go out to bid until you have the funding for it, so I guess.
I mean, you would like a quote.
Well. Well, I guess if you're putting something in for capital, it would be better to have a more realistic number than something that you tell us is three years old.
Yeah, it's gonna, should have a recent, you should have a recent quote.
Quote, okay.
Written quote.
Got it.
Right, so historically, you know, same thing with the bathrooms at the high school. It's, there's not a great deal of time, and then they tend to go on year after year after year, and that's something that's been on there for several years, and it just wasn't updated. So it's an honest, it's a honest response-
Actually, I went through your capital expenditures for the last ten years, and this is the first time that I saw the JHS cooling tower on your capital expenditures that you submitted to the town council.
I, I know we've had many conversations with it because it's been repaired.
So it, so it, so it, so this is the first capital expenditure-
I'll have to go back and check, but thank you for mentioning that. I'll go back and check.
So, so the other two items on the Board of Ed that we were looking at is the um, parking lot, the TBS parking pavement and the auditorium?
Yeah.
What exactly does that entail? And did you get current, like a current quote, or?
No, we have, we have no quotes on anything with paving. We would probably do the auditorium before TBS uh, because of the usage and, uh, from the community. And Franny would have to give us a number if, if he's doing and he's grinding and, and doing work around town, if there's something that, you know, he can do. But the auditorium would be a higher priority than TBS.
Okay, so, so so what are, are you talking about in, for the auditorium? Are you talking just in front of the auditorium? Are you talking?
There's no parking behind the auditorium, Rose, so it would be the parking lot in front.
Yeah, but I mean, are you talking roads going in there, the parking lot across by the high school?
No, it would just, just be the auditorium parking lot. We'd start with that.
Okay. So-
Alexa, do you want?
So the cost that you have in your budget is fifty thousand dollars? Franny, is there any way that you could kinda tell us if that's low? If we, if we need more?
I wouldn't even, you, you really have to measure it up. I mean, I have to call it and measure. I wouldn't wanna guess at it. You, you really have to measure it.
Okay.
I, I could try to work on that tomorrow. I don't know if I can get the guy there tomorrow, but I could certainly try.
Okay, and what were you thinking for the TBS parking lot?
We weren't thinking of that. We, that would be a secondary priority to the auditorium.
I know, but if, if, if we were going to fund both of them, what would be, what are you talking, the, the road coming in and both parking lots?
No, it would just be, I would, I would just do the entry road. That's, in conversation with Franny, that seems to be the, the tough spot, next to the firehouse as you enter there.
Okay, so that, so neither one of the parking lots, just the road coming out?
Just the road coming in.
Okay, so Franny, can you, if possible, look at those two areas? Tomorrow, and see if you can, um, you know, right now, between the two of them, they have a hundred thousand dollars, fifty thousand each. Um, and, you know, is that, are we in the ballpark on that, or not?
I, I, yeah, I'll, I'll work on that tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So under the CIP on the town hall, there was a um, software or I five machine upgrade for eighty-five thousand dollars under um, budget funds. And um, I talked to Anthony in regards to this, to exactly what that was. And the I five machine is um, the computer for their software. It's their mainframe for their software. But he said that this could wait a year on, on there. So I would like to make a motion to decrease uh, budget funds from the soft, under town hall, software or I five machine upgrade for eighty-five thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Question.
Council Angela, that was software and what?
I think it says I five machine.
Okay, so and that account is?
It's, it's just, it's under the CIP. There is no account.
Okay, so just for software, okay. Ballot favor?
Hi.
Hi. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining?
Okay, as discussed earlier, or mentioned earlier, there has been discussion by the council in regards to establishing a facility maintenance reserve account um, for the town buildings, and this would be used for, you know, things like um, AC repairs, furnaces repaired, you know, fencing repaired, those types of things that would come up. And I think we were all in agreement that um, we need to start taking um, more action in regards to preventive medicine and maintenance. Um, so I would like to make a motion to establish this account, a facility maintenance reserve for town buildings for fifty thousand dollars, and that it would be funded through the fund balance.
Second. Any discussion?
Ballot favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay.
So under Public Works, there is a, a line item for um, smaller equipment purchases um, under budget funds for twenty-five thousand dollars. And during Franny's budget conversations, uh, during his workshop, and we talked about the surplus, the possible surplus in his account this year because of the reduced snowstorms, um, and that type of thing. I would like to make a motion, uh, or, so we would fund this, this capital, this twenty-five thousand dollars out of his nineteen-twenty operating surplus. And this is the question that I had asked Anthony during that. We would have to make an appropriation transfer from his operating into capital, but it would be funded in, through this year's money. So I'd like to make a motion to um, decrease Public Works smaller equipment by twenty-five thousand dollars under budget funds.
Second. Question.
I have one question. I thought we talked about the excess of uh, snow funds, if you will, snow plowing and salt being allocated to tree removal.
Yes, that, that, he did, he does have enough in his account to go towards, to take care of what he is over in tree removal. And he still had some money left over after he took care of tree removal. Um, doing, he was gonna decide whether he wanted the salt or the liquid to replenish that to start off next year. Um, so he was using those funds, but he still had some funds left over that we could take twenty-five thousand dollars to do this.
Okay, thank you. That's good. Good to hear.
Any other discussion?
Well, I'm sorry. Ballot favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions?
Okay, under Public Works, um, so the equipment reserve is at, uh, proposed at three twenty-five under the budget funds. And uh, the lease that Franny has for next year is approximately a hundred and forty thousand dollars for the backhaul. Um, so we would have to cover that for sure. But we have worked, the council has worked hard over the last several years to get our budget funds for CIP in the million to one point two million, roughly a mil, um, so that we have it year after year, so we can take care of things. So um, I don't want to suggest that we cut this account totally, but um, if we, I'm gonna propose a cut of seventy-five thousand dollars to equipment reserve, which would still give him two hundred and fifty thousand in that account. Um, so he would still be building up a reserve for his other equipment. So I'd like to make a motion to cut equipment reserve by seventy-five thousand dollars.
Rose, what was the starting balance on that?
Um, I'm not sure. In the up, in the updated paperwork that we, we received in regards to your capital account, I wanna say that it was a, I thought it was about six thousand dollars. Let me see if I have that.
Hey Anthony?
Yep, I'm pulling it up right now.
I, I had thirty-four seven. I, I don't know.
Yes, it is opening, well, opening balance of seven-one-twenty, yes, thirty-four-seven.
Right, so that was left over from la- last year.
Right. But the, but the sheet that we received only showed three hundred, but our budget book showed three twenty-five. So that's what I'm going off of is the three twenty-five in our budget book.
Does that sound right?
Yeah, it's gonna, you're gonna end this year with thirty-four, seven, eighty-nine in your reserve.
So when do we put it for appropriation, three hundred thousand or three twenty-five?
Our budget book says three twenty-five.
Right.
Not including the thirty-four?
No, that's just new money.
New money.
Okay. So the thirty-four is still there. That's my point.
Correct. Right.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Who made the second? Was there a second?
No.
Oh, sorry.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Ballot favor?
Hi.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions?
Okay, so the one column that has an effect on the budget and the mil rate is any of the funds in the budget column. So um, two of the items that were listed under the education department, um, installing gas to Stanley T. Williams and TBS, and then converting those two buildings, that was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was put under the municipal grant column. And the only issue with that is, is that that was just for their portion. And on the Stanley T. Williams building, the, the board, uh, the town has sixty percent of the cost, but there's nothing on our side of the budget to do that. Um, so we have no costs there, so it would be hard to do this project without having any cost on the town side. And it's my understanding that the municipal budget, only the grant, is the maximum of three hundred thousand dollars. And so a hundred thousand is allocated for the two police cars. So at this time, I would like to make a motion to decrease municipal budget by one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is the estimated cost to install gas and convert Stanley T. Williams and TBS.
Second.
Rose, I'm missing something. It's not shown as a town expenditure. It's shown as state aid, but you're saying it will not be funded by the state, therefore it's gonna automatically move to town.
Well, no, that, no, what I'm saying is that that cost of a hundred fifty is only the Board of Ed's portion. So on Stanley T. Williams, we have sixty percent of the cost, but there's no, there's no funding shown anyplace, whether it's under the grant, budget funds, any-
Right, yeah.
To do that. So, so we don't know what the cost of that project is, and, and I'm not sure where the hundred fifty thousand came from. Or where that-
Something that, we, we don't show as a projected expenditure.
What, converting?
Yeah, was it, yeah, there's nothing in-
Correct. Correct. So, so that's why I'm making a proposal to delete it, because we haven't had any conversation of, of doing this.
So is your motion to, is your motion to delete the hundred fifty under?
Municipal, yes. Right, be- because we are, because my next motion is gonna be, we're moving something else from budget funds over to municipal.
Okay.
Mike, just, can I ask you a quick question? Was that with the ambulance barn and the firehouse? It was a, a three-part project for those?
It was that, it was that area, yeah. Um, but again, this is, this is one-
The ambulance barn, the firehouse, Stanley-
Yeah, this, this, this is listed as just um, Stanley T. Williams and TBS, not, not picking up any other.
But the original conversation was for those two buildings as well, correct?
It, it might have been a few years, or when we, we first visited this uh, pro- uh, project about two, maybe two years ago. We had talked about how, how it could run right into the center of town, and we would pick up, yeah, we would probably talked about picking up the-
Those two as well. That, that's, that's how we got into the conversation. It was from the firehouse and the ambulance barn.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ballot favor?
Hi.
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 Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain?
Okay, so now we have some additional funding available under the municipal grant. So we looked at, on the under Public Works, under pavement overlay. There's five hundred thousand um, budgeted, and originally it was four hundred thousand under budget funds and a hundred thousand under town aid. Um, and in talking with Anthony to find out exactly what types of projects are covered under the various grants, um, he said that the pavement overlay would be a, a good one. And that's kind of what they're looking for on the municipal grant. So I, so we are moving two hundred thousand from budget funds over to municipal grant. Um, and between that and the police cars at a hundred thousand, that takes care of the grant from, on municipal grant, which is a three hundred thousand dollar grant. So I would like to make a motion to move two hundred thousand from pavement overlay from budget funds to municipal project grant.
And what did we-
And what did we do with the registrar's tabulators?
That's getting, that's gonna get moved over under budget funds.
Okay.
I'll second that, Rose. It's wrong.
Any, any discussion?
Yeah, if, if I could just raise on the overment, payment overlay, something that came up with, with Kurt Weiss, and I think, I think Kurt's on the call. An oversight i- in terms of a project or Twin Lakes Road for the design of that, which is necessary, but about a hundred thousand dollar project estimate for that. Kurt thought that you could take that from the, the four hundred thousand that was in there, just skinny that down to three hundred for his overlay, but to, to try and pick up that. It's an important project that he, he feels should be, should be funding. He's willing to reduce that pavement, payment overlay figure of four hundred thousand, so. If he went, Kurt maybe could add to that.
Yeah, if I can just add to it, the Twin Lakes Road, this is, the construction would be funded under a state lot sip program. So this is just, it, it's a good leverage of funds to get the design done so that we can utilize the state funds to do the, the overlay of Twin Lakes Road, which is about a nine hundred thousand dollar state funds that we'll get to do that work.
Okay.
So I think if you're receptive to that, I think we probably have to add.
We can change that.
Okay.
We, we'll just change under budget funds, just divide it up between the two.
I have a quick question for Kurt. Kurt?
Yes?
Twin Lakes Road versus Totogut Road?
Twin Lakes Road-
Where, where's the priority come in?
Well, Totogut Road- It's funding. I mean, the, we don't, we're not even close to, to a number. Twin Lakes Road is something, it, it, we're really looking at a, basically a milling and a resurfacing. And that's an expensive project. Totogut Road, again, we're just talking, we're, we're talking millions and millions and, and sections. We sort of had this discussion for thirty years. I tend to agree with you. It'd be nice to start it somewhere, we gotta pick our way through Totogut Road.
Right.
But utilizing the state funds, in or, you wouldn't be able to utilize them for Totogut Road because we wouldn't be able to design that road in most cases to the state stand.
Okay.
So Twin Lakes Road seems to be a pretty good fit for utilize, utilization of the state funds.
Thank you.
So did we, did we vote on the, the two hundred thousand going over to municipal grant?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion then to decrease pavement overlay under budget funds by one hundred thousand dollars and increase Twin Lakes Road pavement rehabilitation by one hundred thousand dollars.
All right, I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
Is that Councilwoman, that?
Yeah.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Okay. Under public safety, there is sixty-five thousand dollars in for replacing the fire chief's vehicle. And in talking with Anthony, exactly what LoSIP funds are available for it, I, Anthony, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe to do a vehicle, you would need to submit something to OPEV to, or OPM to ask them to use it for that fund?
Uh, that's, that's more for the municipal project grant.
Okay.
That's the one you need to waiver for.
Oh, okay. All right. But in looking at the projects that would qualify under LoSIP funds, one of them that stood out to us that has been on here for a couple of years and we really need to start take, addressing the issue, and it's at town hall, and it's the entrance to town hall, and it's the stairs, the, the ramp, the, the railings. So I would like to make a motion to decrease the-
I can't hear you, Rose.
I would like to decrease the fire chief's vehicle under LoSIP for sixty-five thousand dollars. And transfer the sixty-five thousand dollars to town hall new front steps and rails.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
All in favor?
Um, aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain?
Okay, so for the other, the remaining funds, because the front hall, the, the front entrance to town hall is estimated at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we transferred two hundred thousand dollars from budget funds under pavement overlay over into municipal grant. So we have about two hundred thousand dollars in this area to spend in order to stay around that million dollars in budget funds. So I would like to propose that we use eighty-five thousand dollars of budget funds for the town hall, the new front steps and railings.
All right, I'll second it.
Any discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain?
Okay. So we need to, I want to make a, a motion to add the tabulators for the registrars for thirteen thousand three hundred to budget funds. This was originally under the municipal grant fund.
I'm sorry, Rose, you cut out there. Can you repeat that?
I would like to make a motion to add the tabulators for the registrars for thirteen thousand three hundred to budget funds. This was originally under the municipal grant program.
All in favor?
You second it, I'll second it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, jumped the gun.
Any discussion?
I did not hear who seconded that, I'm sorry.
Joe. Joe Fawnin.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain?
Okay, so in looking at the projects that are, are on the capital that were not funded, and because of the movement that we did to take budget funds and put them over into grant funding, two of the areas that I looked at in keeping with the previous conversations that the council has had about preventive maintenance and keeping up with our buildings, I looked at the painting, interior painting of the Smith Library and the Atwater Library. So I would like to make a motion to add interior painting for Smith Library at twenty-eight thousand seven fifty and interior painting for Atwater Library of thirty-seven thousand five hundred.
Those are both budget funds, right, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Has anybody looked, has anybody looked at these buildings?
Is this, was this something that Lauren had put on, the library director? Is she on?
Yes, it was something that I put on. Nobody from the town council has looked at it. It was my suggestion.
A lot of money to spend without somebody looking at it. Uh, this is Walter Goode. Is that something we can possibly skip this year? Fifty thousand on painting the libraries? I think somebody should look at it before we spend fifty thousand. I'd rather give the fire chief a truck than, you know, paint libraries.
Right. I mean, not, not that we don't want to maintain, but I think paint could maybe wait for a year, you know, especially when we're trying to cut so much here. You know, not saying it might not need it, but I don't know, I think that's something we could wait on for a year.
So I'll withdraw my motion.
I'm making a motion to take that fifty thousand and put it towards the fire chief's truck.
The number is closer to sixty-five, Mike, actually.
Well, we've got some other contingency. But at least fifty will be there. It's a lot easier to make up twelve thousand than it is to make up sixty-two.
Well, we can put it, we can put it all, we can put the fire chief's truck all under budget funds.
That's fine.
Under sixty, the sixty-five under budget funds in CIP.
All right. You want to make that motion?
Thank you.
Is that your motion, Mike?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I just want to say I think that was a good move. Appreciate that, Mike.
Thank you.
I, I have a, I have a question. I mean, what's, um, do we have to spend the money?
No, we don't have to spend the money, but Tom, the fire chief's truck is a hundred and fifty thousand miles and it's in tough shape. And then even at that, you know, I mean, he responds to everything for, for, for a dime on a dollar.
Yeah, I'm ju, I'm just asking-
His salary should be a hell of a lot more than it is now.
Do we, uh, do we know what, will we be able to use his old truck for anything?
I believe, I believe they were gonna pass it down to one of the fire marshals.
Okay.
Is that correct, chief?
I don't know if he's here anymore, but this is a-
Yeah, he's here.
But yeah, that's what we were gonna do. But we were, we were gonna blow, blow fire marshal cars down because they were in such bad shape, I guess. The town mechanics told us that they didn't even think they were work, working on anymore. We were gonna move his car to the fire marshal, and the fire marshal's car down to the deputy marshal. That was our plan.
Okay.
So if I can just clarify, council duty moved seconded by Councilor Diamond to fund the fire chief's truck from-
Budget funds. Sixty-five thousand.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain?
I don't know if this, Rose, I don't know if it matters, but we moved sixty-five, but the, the combined amount of the two paint jobs was sixty-six thousand two fifty.
It, it doesn't matter, it's just our, the budget fund will just be up a little bit more.
Okay.
So Anthony, do you have a total of what budget funds?
Right now, you're at a mil, uh, one thing we gotta do is we gotta fix Kevin's cars. He needs another eight thousand because they're fifty-four each now. So we need to throw another eight thousand probably in budget funds. The hundred's not gonna cut it for two cars. The, the hundred was an old budget number, but the new number is a hundred and eight to buy two cars.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to increase police vehicles under budget fund by eight thousand dollars.
Second.
Discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
So Anthony, do you have a running tabulation of what that budget fund number bottom line is now?
Yes. Were you gonna address the ambulance grounds?
Uh, oh, yeah. So on the ambulance building for ground repairs, there, there was an amount for fifteen thousand dollars in there on the first one, and I forgot on the revised one. That came out because we now have established the facility maintenance reserve for fifty thousand. And in, in talking to Franny, his department can probably do some of this work and that cost shouldn't be as high as fifteen thousand. It might be half of that cost. And that is something that could come out of the facility maintenance repair. So do we have to have a motion for that? Because it's not on the revised.
My, my question is, a lot of work was done up there. Is that already done? And what are we getting for fifteen thousand? I saw new sidewalks go in and new landscaping and stuff like that.
Mike, that was originally the, uh, what the fifteen was. That's why I said we could lower it, because we just got some pavement work left to do.
Okay. So what, what's the figure we need, Franny?
Um, what did I say, Rose? Remember?
Like, like around five thousand, but it's-
I thought it was around five or six thousand worth of pavement. We gotta cut a sidewalk and we're gonna fix in front of the bays. There's just a, a few patches that have to be done around the island in the front we're gonna take out in the, right near the chief's door there. We're gonna make that disgorge straight across. So it's not, it's not as much as the original whole project was. We already did the sidewalks and the drainage.
So that, that's why we could take it out of, we don't have to have it at all because it can be taken out of that facility maintenance repair account that we established.
Right, well, right, and I, I'll get a number and come back to you with it. Anthony, did we take- Anthony, did we take care of the, the, uh, concrete on that job?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, we should be, we should be, I, I, I'll get some numbers and come back to you with it anyway, right? That's how it's going to work?
Correct.
Yeah. Alright.
So you're not going to do this out of this year's budget? You're going to do it out of next year's budget? So that job's going to wait?
In, in, unless, unless we, it would be good to do it if we, if we had money to do it in the, in this year's.
I think we're going to have money left over this year.
Yeah.
I, I can't see spending five or six thousand dollars out of next year's budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Tell Anthony and Mike to sharpen their pencil. Do it this year.
That's your, that's your job.
Yeah, no, Mike and Anthony, you heard it. Sharpen your pencil.
Yeah, I think we can find.
Do it this year.
It makes sense. We think we can find five, six thousand.
God, if you can, I'll go down there and I'll find it.
You do need a motion, Rose, because that fifteen was in the, in the manager's column for building ground repairs.
Oh, okay.
You need a motion to eliminate it.
So I make a motion to eliminate fifteen thousand for the ambulance building ground repairs, which will be done in the nineteen twenty fiscal year.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Now the question, Rose, is can we take that fifteen thousand and roll it into the facilities maintenance?
Anthony?
Yeah, that's, that's coming out of fund balance. You can put whatever you want to put over there.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
Do you want to change the fifty to sixty-five?
Uh, no, I would.
So, so, so is it staying under budget funds? That, that, I think that's what Mike was. Because it was originally under budget fund.
Correct. I thought he mentioned he wanted to keep it in the facility reserve, which we funded before on the fund balance.
Right, so we either.
Well, is it just going to sit there or what's it going to do? What's that fifteen going to do?
Nothing.
It, it just got eliminated.
It, it, it came out of, it came out of the budget fund balance out of the CIP. So it's not there because we're going to take care of it this year.
Alright, that's fine.
Right now your, your budget fund column is one million twenty-five thousand seven six zero. One zero two five seven six zero.
Okay, and our original number was twelve?
Uh, original number.
Two five four.
It was, uh, yes, one million two five four four six zero.
Four six zero.
Correct.
So that's a decrease in our budget of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand seven hundred?
Uh, I believe you. I didn't double check. Twenty, yeah, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand seven hundred. Is that what you said, Rose?
Yes.
Yes, two, two two eight seven zero zero is the reduction, correct?
Okay.
Are we good with, uh, B?
I'm good with B.
We just have to get some answers for tomorrow night if we can on, on the paving projects.
Correct. Okay.
So, um, Deputy Mayor, before we go on to the next one, because we've now established that, uh, facility maintenance fund, can we go back to the, to A? Because there was one item under the fire department?
Yep, sure.
Um, so the item on contractual repairs for five thousand, I would like to make a motion to decrease item four two two zero point three twenty contractual repairs for firehouses for five thousand dollars. Because this would now be able to come out of our facility maintenance um, account if there's anything that comes up under that item.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
What was the amount?
Five thousand.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
So moving to C, debt service?
So, uh, on debt service, I think in conversation with Anthony, I think there's some, some, uh, some funds there that would be, uh, potentially used for, for a reduction. Probably close to one forty, Anthony. Is that, is that accurate?
That's, that's a hundred percent correct, yeah. What, uh, what I was trying to accomplish was realizing that somewhere in the near, near future, there's going to be some significant bonding happening. And I was trying to keep our debt service as level as possible. So it, it, as Mike mentioned, there's a hundred and forty thousand in there to keep it almost dollar for dollar equal to last year's number. And my intention was to try to maintain a level debt service uh, to avoid when these projects kick in. Right now we're about three point eight, I believe, million dollars. And, um, I mean, it could go above five, five and a half, close to six million dollars in some of the, some of the years. So my, my thought was to try to work with our financial advisor and pick a number, say four million dollars a year, four and a quarter, just whatever the number ends up being. If we could fund at that level number for a period of, say, seven or eight or nine years, knowing in the early years it would be more than our debt service actually was, but then it would be less in the outer years when the large peaks would kick in. Um, so that's why the hundred and forty is in there and you could certainly take that out now and, and bring it down to the actual cost of the debt service. It's just an attempt to try to build up a reserve to mitigate some of the impact of these large bonding projects when they do finally hit.
Hey, hey, Anthony, when we bond, what's the normal, uh, term? How many years usually?
Twenty years. We typically do twenty years, twenty year terms. Um, and we're working again, trying to figure out if we can, you know, do some short-term financing for maybe one or two years until we have a, a significant decline in our debt service. I believe it's the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. And if we could kind of, uh, work these numbers, again, not knowing all the numbers yet, uh, just two out of the four that we kicked, in fact, there's actually five projects that have been kicking around. There's some, uh, bridge work in, in talking with the town engineer that he's going to need over the next uh, three to four, maybe six-year time horizon to bond some money for some, some bridge work. So it's the school, it's the police station, it's the Stanley T. Williams roof, it's the communication, it's, it's the the road pro, the, uh, bridge program. So we're trying to get a number as, as in totality, if we can, to get the total impact and not just kind of fire off, uh, willy-nilly numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Anthony, with the bond, you know, with money being really cheap, the bonds right now are, you know, everything you hear in the news, they're in the negative range, I mean, are, can we bond to kind of be like a line of credit for us? And if we don't use the money, does it have to be specific? Or exactly how does that process work?
There is, there are, um, timeline requirements that you, you have to, once you bond the money, you have to spend it with an X amount of money. I believe it's twelve months for some projects, eighteen months for other types of projects. Um, that it has to be spent, uh, in that time. So you can't just bond it now while it's cheap and, and sit on it.
Okay.
Uh, in, in talking with, with Mark Chapman, the, the market is, uh, volatile like he's never seen it. In, in a two-day span, it went up two hundred basis points on, on a twenty-year bond. Uh, they were paying, one was paying right around one, and then the next day they did another deal and went close to three. Uh, same kind of credit, same kind of terms, same kind of dollar amount. So it's, it's just crazy times in the market, as, as you see, uh, you know, watching on TV and stuff, but, uh, I, I understand what you're saying as far as trying to borrow and, and, and sit on it if we could. There, there's, there's, there's arbitrage implications as well. You know, what you're going to get on the bank. You have to be concerned about the interest you're going to earn versus what interest you're paying. If you earn more, then you owe the government back money. So there, it's, while it sounds good in, in, you know, your private life, it, it can't be done on, on the town side.
Okay. So on the hundred and forty thousand that we have in debt service, um, I mean, I, I understand, um, your, your reasoning and what you're trying to accomplish, given what's on the horizon for, for bonding.
Yes.
So is this something we can make a decision on when we get close, before we finalize the budget to see once if we don't have to take the whole thing and just take part of it?
Certainly.
What we want to do?
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
So, so for edification purposes, I, I just need a quick explanation. So, uh, on the CIP and the fire equipment reserve, uh, it was originally requested at, at the, uh, department level for five fifty. At the manager proposed two twenty-five and it continued on at two twenty-five. So I, if I understand it right, uh, our, our second lease payment on engine three is one seventy-three five hundred. So we're getting two twenty-five. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other action we have to take here?
Uh, not, not in my opinion, not for debt service. I think it's, uh, you know, save that to the end, um, tomorrow.
Alright, so, uh, to D, education?
Mike, we're here.
Yeah, okay.
I didn't know if they were waiting for an introduction or if they have questions.
Yeah, I.
Or if you're going to segue into it or?
Uh, I, I think there was a.
What do you got?
A, a long. I don't know. I just, I, I'm not sure, uh, who wants to go first, but, uh, I think we've gone through the town side, obviously, so it's, it's now.
It was, it was crickets when you said now the, for education.
Yeah, I.
I lost everyone.
I think they were maybe going for their notes, I, I guess.
Counsel, any questions, uh, that, that you have specific to what you received? Um, I know that questions were answered and sent back to you. Um, it's my understanding right now, the only two outstanding questions would be the killer compressor updated um, estimate for tomorrow and the, uh, parking estimate from Franny for the front of the auditorium and the driveway, uh, entrance into, um, Tuttucket Valley and Stanley T. Those are the two outstanding things that I think that are still waiting for information on. Anything else in the budget?
Um, I, does anyone have anything?
Um, Scott, there was an article in the paper about Wallingford. They're coming up with three point three million dollars in savings like this coronavirus shutdown.
Yeah, that's interesting. I, he's got a hundred and ten million dollar budget. Mine's thirty-three. So apples to apples, apples to orange. I, I don't.
You should be able to come up with a million? Is that it? Or the formula is a little off?
Well, you're looking, you're looking to cut me a million, so where am I going to find a million? Come on, Mike?
Alright, it was just a question. I, I was.
No, listen, come on. You don't think I was prepared for that one, do you? Come on. Uh, I, I know the, the transportation questions out there you've had that we're, you know, we've worked with, we're working with Daco and, and, uh, Martha Vaughn, our business manager, is communicating with other districts that, that have our service provider, um, with our attorneys as well. So, you know, we're looking at, um, the potential for, obviously with the, the, the academic year still up in question, if we were not to run any of the athletic buses uh, or field trip buses, it equates to right around eighty thousand dollars or so. So we know that we have, we have something there with that for transportation. The rest of it is, um, through the executive order seven R to the governor. We're just trying to get, navigate through that um, without opening contracts, but amending and seeing how we could make it equitable for both, uh, the town and for the, the service provider. So, you know, that's where we're at with that.
Nah, we appreciate that. Just, just the question, you know?
No, it, it, you know, they're, uh, they're three times our size and, or more than three times our size in, in budget. You know, as you know, you are aware, we continue to pay all of our employees, certified, non-certified. And they're, they're working in various capacities as we move on. And we're, we're trying to be, um, consistent with what the governor has said and, and our East Shore Health Department with, you know, how we're staffing and keeping all of our employees safe. Um, and, and that's been, you know, the model we've stuck to. We're still, we're waiting for guidance and direction from the governor and from the Commission of Education. Um, we're a little frustrated right now that we still haven't heard anything about finishing the school year or not. Um, you know, surrounding states have already called the year, Massachusetts, Vermont, Maine, I believe. And I think the, the tri-state area of New Jersey, Connecticut, and New York, um, they're going to couple together and do something in the next several days.
You know, in the way the funding is going on the federal government, I don't think there's going to be any money coming back to, um, school systems or towns.
There weren't, yeah, there, you know, there's. There were, yeah, there, you know, there's a lot of communication now, you know, the, the, what was it, 500 billion that was released, or?
Yeah.
And a, and a fractional piece of that, you know, was designated towards education. So it, it's the waiting game to see where we're at, um, as we navigate through.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, specific questions? About anything, no?
Thanks, Scott.
Okay, well, if anything, uh, email tomorrow, I know tomorrow night is the, the final evening. Uh, for deliberations, and if you have anything, if you get it to me earlier, the better, obviously, so I can, um, get an answer back to you in writing, you know, prior to tomorrow night.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, item three?
Yeah, I think, I don't think you're prepared, those are just there as, uh, in case you got to that, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think three, four, and five, we're just passing.
Right, right.
Right, and, uh, next, uh, tomorrow night's budget looked the same way, except for we added a, a one about the process. Uh, Rose had, had caught that, uh, you, you need to wrestle with the, uh, budget referendum process and, and the vote, how you're gonna do that. So, uh, that was added as revised, uh, to the agenda for tomorrow night.
Okay. Motion adjourned?
I make the motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you tomorrow.
Bye.
Goodnight, everyone.